What's up Dean? Alright, so we'll start off with some proofs. You guys alright with that? Can you see the whiteboard alright?
Yeah, we're good.
Sweet. So, the first one will be tangent of x plus cotangent of x equals secant cosecant. So I'll have you guys start with that one, alright?
They're starting it off really easy.
Oh yeah? It's so crying, I don't want to make you guys cry on the first problem. How you guys doing? You want more time? You ready to go over it? Anybody wanna talk to me?
Good, we good.
Good, alright. So you guys wanna work on left side or right side?
The left.
Left side. So here we have something plus something versus the right side, we have something times something. If that's ever the case, I would definitely always work on the side that has something plus something. Uh, what should be our first step then?
Uh, make it into sine and cosine.
Yeah, that's what I would do is make in terms of sine and cosine, so tangent will be sine over cosine. Cotangent is really cosine over sine. Where do we go from there?
Multiply the right by cosine and the left by sine. Uh, sine, well cosine over cosine and then.
Right, we really wanna make this one fraction because once we make it one fraction, then we can kinda split it up to something times something. So to make it one fraction, we need a common denominator. So on the left, I would multiply by sine over sine. In my right one, I would multiply by cosine over cosine. Alright, so when I do that, now my denominator will be sine cosine. Up on top though, we have sine times sine is really gonna be sine squared. Cosine times cosine is really gonna be cosine squared. What next?
Um, sine squared and plus cosine squared equals one.
Yeah, that is a Pythagorean identity, that's the one you guys have to know. That is really gonna be one. So on top, I'm gonna put one. Looking over what I'm trying to get to is gonna be secant times cosecant. Secant is really one over cosine. So I'm gonna switch the order of these. Yeah, so instead of writing sine cosine, I'm gonna write the cosine sine. And then my last step, I see this is really one over cosine times one over sine. So I can just split those up and get secant times cosecant. Which is exactly what I'm trying to get to is gonna equal secant times cosecant. Guys alright with that one?
I have a good question, Mr. Herney.
Yes?
Um, regarding our notation, if we put like for example sine of x but with the parentheses around the x and then in the same problem, we end up putting it as sine of x without the parentheses, would we get docked for that?
Uh, really just try to stick to one way or the other, try not to go halfway through the problem. I don't care which one you do, but just try to be consistent.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Uh, so question for you guys, you wanna do all your proofs now? Or do you wanna switch back and forth, proof and then solving, proof and then solving?
Done the test.
Uh, your first six problems will be proofs and then your next four will be solving.
Let's do that.
Alright.
Yeah.
I'm alright with that. Alright, so you guys will get another proof one. Uh, this one, let's do sine equals cosecant minus cosine cotangent. You guys want more time? You ready? How you doing?
We good.
Good? Alright. You wanna start on the left side or on the right side then?
Right side.
Yeah, right side. I always wanna start on the most complicated side. Sine of x, it can't get much more simple than that. So what do we wanna do on the right side?
Make it into one fraction.
Make it into one fraction? So it's tough to make it into one fraction when we don't have any kind of fractions in our problem. So what might we do before that?
Uh, put in terms of sine and cosine.
Exactly. So I might try to get this in terms of co- sine and cosine. So really, I might try to factor, but there's really nothing to factor here because there's no like terms. So definitely in terms of sine and cosine. Alright, so cosecant is really gonna be one over sine minus cosine, which is really over one. That marker is no good. And cotangent is really cosine over sine. You guys alright with that?
Yeah, we good.
Yeah, where do we go from here then?
Multiply straight across.
So like over here on this right part? What's that?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, I thought I heard another voice. Um, so this is really gonna be one over sine minus cosine times cosine is gonna give us cosine squared over sine. Something really stands out to me at this point. What about you guys?
Same denominator.
Same denominator, so we might as well make them one fraction. So this is gonna be one minus cosine squared over sine. Well, that's a bummer, I want sine up on top, not on bottom. Where might we go from here?
Pythagorean identity.
Pythagorean identity, so hopefully you guys see that one minus cosine squared is really gonna be sine squared. Does that make sense? Yep?
Yes, sir.
Sweet, so we got sine squared of x on top and a normal sine on bottom. And what might my last step be?
Uh, taking out, taking out a sine.
Yeah, if we got sine squared divided by sine, that's really the square cancelling with the denominator, so I'm really just gonna be left with sine of x is gonna equal sine of x. And I'm all done. So guys, make sure if we're working on the right side, that our equal sign is to the left of everything. Does that make sense? It was on our first test this year that we had to do proofs. A lot of you guys still like to write the equal sign over on the right side, which I will dock you on this time. So make sure you don't do that.
Quick question. So, um, with the whole equal sign thing, if I like clearly state on like the first, the first part of my work that I'm switching it around, where it's cscx minus uh, cosine x, cotangent x equals sine x and then I solve it with the equal sign on the right, is that viable or do I have to keep it how it's originally given to me?
Um, I don't like that. I think I would still give you points if you rewrote it though.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
No, if you could, just keep, stay on the right side. But I'd give you points for it if you didn't.
Okay.
Alright. Other questions? Going once, going twice, alright. Next problem then. Oh, this one looks like a fun one. Cosine squared of theta equals one minus sine to the fourth of theta divided by one plus sine squared of theta. Good luck to you all. Would you guys like more time or you ready? This one hopefully is pretty easy for you.
Dean raised a hand, I think.
He raised a hand?
I didn't mean to, I accidentally clicked it.
Well, that's good cuz I don't see any hand raises or any of that nonsense. Does that mean you guys are ready then?
Yeah, we're good.
Good, alright. Left side or right side?
Definitely right side.
Definitely right side, alright. Where do you wanna begin on the right side? They're already in terms of sine and cosine. It's already one fraction. There's nothing to distribute.
You sum and difference on the top?
Um, so yeah, difference of squares. We can factor the top of this. So you have something squared minus something squared, you can always factor that. So how does that factor?
Sine squared.
It's what?
Nevermind.
One minus sine squared of theta, one plus sine squared of theta?
Exactly. One minus sine squared times one plus sine squared. Okay, the square root of one is one, that has to go first. The square root of sine to the fourth is sine squared. Since uh, sine to the fourth was second or last, we have to put our sine squareds last. My denominator stays the same, you cannot factor that. Where do we go from here then?
Canceling the one plus sine squared.
Yeah, cancel the one plus sine squared, we're then left with one minus sine squared. We don't have anything denominator anymore. Why don't we make one minus sine squared into cosine squared though?
That's an idea, that's just the sine squared.
Pythagorean identity, this is really gonna be cosine squared. Alright. So then we're gonna be left with cosine squared on the right side, which is exactly what we want on the left side. You guys have any questions on this problem?
Yeah, I do, I'm, I'm sorry for so many questions, but um.
No, ask as many questions as you want.
So kinda just from the start, disregarding the one minus and the one plus, if you just use, uh, can you just use like exponential laws and, you know, just cancel two of the, cancel the two signs on bottom and then just make that one minus sine squared of theta over one and then.
Great question, you cannot do that.
Can't do that, okay.
Yeah, the reason being is the sine squared is not being multiplied by everything on bottom and the sine to the fourth is not being multiplied by everything on top. So you guys need to remember, the only time you can cancel stuff is if it's being multiplied by everything else. So when we factor it, now this one plus sine squared is being multiplied by everything else, so that can cancel. So if you jump straight from here to here, that would be incorrect. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright. Other questions? Alrighty then. Feel like I'm just talking to Micah and Dean and Selena once. Alright, see if you guys can do this one. Cosine of alpha over one plus sine of alpha plus cosine of alpha over one minus sine of alpha is gonna equal two secants of alpha. You guys, make sure when you're doing the problems on your tests that you are using the same variable throughout the problem. So if I give you x's, you cannot use theta. If I give you theta, you cannot use x's. Okay, so like here I gave you alpha, you gotta use alpha every step along the way. Does that make sense? Alright.
Real quick, Mr. Herney, if we're multiplying cosine and sine of like alpha with this problem, does it matter which variable goes first?
Um, so our variable is alpha. But I think what you're asking is doesn't matter if we write cosine or sine first, and it really doesn't.
Okay.
I would just say be consistent in the way that you write them, cuz then it's easier to see stuff that maybe can cancel or common denominators or whatnot, does that make sense?
Yeah, makes sense, thank you.
Yeah, but it really doesn't matter. You guys ready to go over it? You want more time?
We're good.
Good? Left side or right side?
Left side.
Left side is correct, we got something plus something. Over here, this is really one over co- or two over cosine that we're trying to get to. What should be your first step?
Um, multiplying by the funny formula one on both sides.
Yeah, we wanna make this one fraction. Alright, it's already in terms of sine and cosine, so to make one fraction, we need one plus sine times one minus sine in our denominator. So this left fraction, I'm gonna multiply that one minus sine of alpha. Okay, this right fraction, I'm gonna multiply that one plus sine of alpha on top and on bottom. Alright, where do we go from there?
Multiplication.
Yeah. So on bottom, I have one minus sine of alpha times one plus sine of alpha. What is that gonna make in the denominator?
One minus sine squared.
One minus sine squared of alpha, make sure you guys are writing your squared right after your trig function, not after your, not after your uh, variable. Does that make sense? Otherwise, that'd be sine of alpha squared, which is not what we want. Okay, so then on top, I probably want to distribute. So this is gonna be cosine of alpha minus cosine of alpha, sine of alpha, and it does not matter which order you write those in. Plus cosine of alpha plus, so since I wrote cosine sine, I'm gonna stick with cosine sine. Okay, make sure you guys extend your fraction bar then. So your fraction bar covers everything on the top and on bottom. Does anything cancel?
Yeah.
Yeah, what cancels?
The minus cosine and then the plus cosine.
So the minus cosine sine, plus cosine sine?
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, yeah, that's what I meant.
Okay, so those cancel on top. Uh, what am I left with on top then?
Two cosine over cosine squared theta.
So I'm left with two cosine of alpha. One minus sine squared is really gonna be cosine squared. At which point, one of our cosines will cancel. So I'm left with two over cosine of alpha. You guys still see that? What is two cosine of alpha really?
Two secant of alpha.
Two secant of alpha, which is gonna equal two secant of alpha, which is what we're trying to get to. Questions? Sailor, you look like you're having a lot of fun.
Yeah, I'm exhausted.
What? You had all weekend dressed up, why are you exhausted?
It's been a long weekend.
Alright. Well, we got two more proofs before we go on solving. So we'll start you guys off with cosine squared of x minus one over cosine of x which will equal negative tangent times sine. Are you guys done? One more time? Are you ready?
I'm good, but I just have one question.
Yeah, what's up?
Can you turn the cosine squared x minus one into negative sine squared x?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yep, cuz that would be Pythagorean identity. Alright, so you guys are good then. Do you wanna start on the left side or on the right side?
The right side.
You wanna start on the right side? Interesting.
The left side.
No, the right side. It's so much more easy.
Uh huh.
Oh, oh, wait, no, no, it's not. I just dropped my negative sign. Never, never mind.
You ever work on the left side?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I would definitely choose to work on the left side, although it's possible to get to the correct answer on the right side. Uh, if we work on the left side, where do you wanna begin?
Can you begin by turning that into a negative sine squared x?
Yeah, if you recognize that one minus cosine squared would be sine squared. And our signs are opposite of that, right? Both of them. This is really gonna be negative sine squared of x. So I got negative sine squared of x. Over cosine of x then. Where do we go from there?
Put up sine squared or negative sine squared into negative sine and sine.
Can you just take out a, can you take out a GCF of sine?
Yeah, so we can split up our sine. And since we're trying to get tangent times sine. I would probably split it up into sine over cosine. Times sine over one. Are you guys alright with that?
Is that legal?
That is legal. If we were to multiply these two fractions together. You've got sine times sine, which would be sine squared. Cosine times one would be cosine. Does that make sense? I would like you to split it up like this. Before we get to our final answer.
I'm actually thinking that the right side is. Is easier. I mean, it's, it's, you really just got to the same spot as the right side. Like, that's the right side right there, but you. You basically skip a step by doing the right side on this one.
So how would you do the right side then, Dean?
Alright, so let's finish this up and I'll show you guys how we can do the right side. I would definitely pick the left side myself, just cuz that looks more complicated. But the right side really is not bad. Um, we could change this to in terms of sine and cosine. So it's be negative sine. Over cosine. Times sine over one. Does that make sense? Quit yawning! So then this would be negative sine squared. Over cosine. Well, negative sine squared is really cosine squared minus one. Or another way, we could write this would be negative. One minus cosine squared. And one minus cosine squared would be sine squared. And we had, still have our negative up front, so negative sine squared. Over cosine. So this is one where if you pick the left side or you pick the right side, they're pretty equivalent to each other. As long as you can recognize what you need to do next. Questions on that? Either side?
No, we good.
We good, alright. Last proof problem then. Are you ready? Where's your energy? Come on, guys. Another yawn. Killing me. Tangent squared of y. Equals one minus cosine of y. Times one plus cosine of y. Divided by cosine squared of y. Are you guys ready?
Yeah.
Yeah. Left side or right side?
Right side.
Right side. What's our first step on the right side?
Making one minus cosine y into sine squared.
So I gotta show the step before that. We really wanna distribute this top.
Oh, okay.
Okay, you don't have to show it all four parts of it, cuz hopefully you recognize this is really just. And the middle part is cancelled. Which would be one minus cosine squared. Over cosine squared.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry about that.
Oh, you're good. I just wanna make sure you're showing all the steps you need to. And what is one minus cosine squared then?
And that is sine squared y.
Sine squared, yeah! There you go. This will be sine squared of y divided by cosine squared of y. What is sine squared divided by cosine squared?
Tangent squared y.
Wait, tangent squared? How neat is that?
Why do you have so many markers?
Why don't you have more markers? These don't get used very often, so they last a long time.
So you just steal markers from the school and bring them back to your house?
No. So some of these are from school, most of them are not, because the ones from school don't last very long for whatever reason. A lot of these Ryan and I bought last spring. And they're still working. Like, look at this dark red and dark green. Those are not school colors. Oh, we'll use this light blue. I bet that's still working.
Okay, my parents are telling me not to be mean to you.
Yeah, you should never be mean to me. You should be better behaved, Micah.
I'm kind of embarrassed. I didn't realize you hurt your house.
I can, uh, the, the light blue is not showing up.
Fine. We'll use a different color. We'll use black then. All I wrote was prove, or no, solve. I wrote solve. We're done proving. Two. Sin of two theta. Equals two. Cosine of theta. That doesn't look very good either. All my markers are dying.
That one shows up pretty well. I don't.
It does? It doesn't look very good. The blue shows up better to me than the black right now.
Visible. Then.
Also, theta is gonna be. Greater than or equal to zero, but less than two pi. You guys alright with that?
Yeah.
Alright.
So, Mr. Herney.
Yeah.
Um, on these problems that have two of x or two of theta, you know how we're supposed to like know the formula for that?
Yeah.
So if we know what it's gonna be, like, for example, sine of two of theta is just gonna be two sine. Of theta, cosine of theta. Do we have to, do we have to include the whole step of us doing the equation for it? Or can we just not do that step and show that we like know it already?
You can show you know it already?
Okay.
Uh, just don't multiply like this two up front with the rest of it yet.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, just be super careful with that. Uh, because if you do screw up the formula, um, you're not gonna get very many points on the problem.
Alright.
You guys ready or you want more time? I'll take that as more time though.
No, we good.
You good?
Uh, no, 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 I'm, I'm not good.
No, Micah does not speak for everybody here, huh?
Hmm, you never know.
You never know.
But. You do get everything onto one side though. I know that.
Yeah, so all of your solving problems on your tests. Uh, and really any kind of solving problem in general, typically you wanna get everything on one side and then factor. Sometimes you might not wanna do that, but on your test, you definitely do. Does that make sense?
Mm hmm.
Okay. Really, the only time you don't wanna get everything on one side is if it's linear.
And the other thing.
Or if you could extract the square.
Okay, and then the other thing is two theta is just, is that's sine squared? Is that?
Not sine squared. Sine of two theta, we're gonna wanna change to sine of beta plus theta.
Theta, oh, yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, alright, I got.
Micah, you said you're ready.
I was, and then I just realized that, yeah.
So you're saying you lied to me?
No, I did not lie to you. I, I asked a very valid question.
So you want more time now?
No, I, I'm good now.
Oh, you're good?
Mm hmm.
Alright, are the rest of you good or you want more time?
They're good. I'll, I'll speak for them. They're good.
I'm gonna assume they need more time unless they say so.
I'm good.
Good. Speak up now if you want more time. Alright, so. We wanna get everything on one side, but honestly, first. Anytime you see sine of two theta or cosine of two theta, get rid of that immediately. Okay, I think that's the easiest way to do these, or the best way to go about it. So this is gonna be two times something. Do you guys want me to show you that step or can I just jump to what it's gonna be? So sine of theta plus theta is really gonna be sine cosine. Plus sine cosine. So we'll have two sine. Of theta, cosine of thetas. Which is gonna equal to cosine of theta. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm gonna try my other baby blue marker and see if you guys can see that. But what I would do next is do two times all this and distribute it, so that is really gonna make four. Sine of theta, cosine of theta. Do you guys see that?
Kinda.
No. So we don't distribute to the cosine. Because all multiplication. If first we're sine plus cosine. Then you would have a four sine plus two cosine. But since it's all multiplication, this is really two times sine times cosine, which is gonna be four. Times sine. Times cosine. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yep. Um, as we've said earlier, we wanna get everything on one side, so I'm gonna bring this two cosine over to the left side at the same time. So I would subtract. Two cosine. And now I'll have equals zero on the right side. What do we do next?
Take out a cosine?
Yeah, we wanna do factoring, right? GCF is the first thing we should always look at when we factor. So we can take out a cosine. Can we take out anything else?
Could you take out two cosine?
I would take out two cosine.
My bad.
Not gonna make that big of a deal. Our problems will just look a little bit different, but we'll still get the same answer. Whether you took out cosine or whether you took out two cosine. Whether you took out cosine or whether you took out two cosine. Um, I always like to take out the greatest common factor, which would be two cosine of theta. If I take out two, I'm gonna be left with a two. Cosine is gone, so I'm only gonna be left with sine. What a lot of students kinda mess up is over here. If I took out a two cosine of theta. A lot of times they just like to say there's nothing over there. Okay, but however to multiply this back out, I'd only get this first part. We have to have a minus one here. You guys alright with that?
Yes, sir.
Now, if I were to distribute back out, I get back up to what I started with. Uh, my next step then is going to be.
Set everything equal to zero.
Yeah, set everything equal to zero. So here, two cosine of theta equals zero. Ooh, this marker is really good. And here I'm gonna have two sine of theta. Minus one equals zero. Do you guys see this is gonna end up being sine of theta equals positive one half? And over here, I would just divide by two, zero divided by two is still zero. So this is just cosine of theta equals zero. So whether you factored out a two cosine of theta or just cosine of theta. You should still end up with here cosine equals zero and sine equals one half. So now I gotta figure out where these are. Remember, cosine really represents my x value on my unit circle. My x value is gonna be zero up at the top.
Pi over one bottom. And three pi over two.
So yeah, that would be pi over two. And three pi over two. Over here, I have sine equals one half. That's really my y value. When is my y value gonna equal positive one half? And that would be here and there. Okay, so I'm just going up a wee bit. So that would be pi over six. And five pi over six. So before I come up with my final answer, I should think about, are any of these gonna be extraneous solutions? Do I have any kind of denominators here?
No.
Tangent or cotangent?
No.
Square roots?
No.
Logarithms?
No.
No, so I really don't have extraneous solutions then. So I would say theta equals. I always write these in order, but you guys don't need to. Pi over six. Pi over two. Five pi over six. And then three pi over two. Is that gonna give me full credit?
No.
Why not?
Nah, you need radians.
I need radians because it's pretty rad. Okay, otherwise it'd be minus one. Questions on that one? Ready for your next problem? Oh man, we're gonna run over an hour, aren't we?
Um, I have a question though. Can you show us how uh cosine of x plus x? Equals. Uh, two cosine. Minus one, or two cosine squared minus one.
Yeah, so cosine of x plus x. So remember when we do sum difference with cosine. We go cosine, cosine. Sin, sin. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Uh, so these are all just x's. I always remember it as cosine is gonna stay the same. So then the symbol in between these is gonna switch. It was positive and it would be negative. You really have cosine squared of x. Minus sine squared of x. And I think one that you wanted was the one with only cosine squared.
Yeah, how do you, how do you, and then the same thing with the sine one too.
Okay, so sine squared is really one minus cosine squared.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So we get cosine squared of x. Minus all of one minus cosine squared of x. You need to distribute your negatives to both of these. So we have cosine squared of x. Minus one. Negative times a negative is gonna be a positive cosine squared of x. Then we just combine like terms. Cosine squared plus cosine squared is two. Cosine squared. And then we still have a minus one.
Okay, is that the same thing for sine squared or?
One exact thing for sine squared. Instead of replacing our sine squared, you would replace cosine squared with one minus sine squared. And then combine like terms. You alright with that?
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Alright, our next solving problem then. Cosine cotangents. Equals cosine. And once again, x is gonna be greater than or equal to zero, but less than two pi.
Mr. Herney?
Yeah.
We do a a problem that's like you have to find like tangent of fifteen degrees?
Oh, we will. Uh, we're tangents of fifteen degrees will not be on your test. It'll either be cosine or sine and it will be.
Oh, in radians, okay.
Why is it, why is it in our practice test then?
Why is degrees in your practice test?
Yeah.
Because it's the same concept. It's just degrees versus radians. And I told you guys when I handed the practice test out, uh, the one on your test will be in radians.
Okay.
So see if you can solve this one. You guys like more time? You ready?
We good.
Good. Is everyone else good?
I'm I'm not.
Alright. How much more time you want, Dean?
Just like ten seconds.
Good now or you want more time?
Uh, yeah, I'm I'm good. Go ahead. I don't, I don't mind.
Rest of you guys good?
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, so where do you wanna start? Any thoughts?
The right side?
What do you mean by the right side?
Oh, never mind, never mind. That's a proof, never mind.
Uh, I would start by uh making cotangent a. Uh. Into sine and cosine.
You could do that. Is that what you guys all wanna do? Or is there a different way? So you're saying?
I started. I started with it in terms of sine and cosine, but that was kinda hard. So I just took cosine and subtracted it and put it on the left side of the equation.
So that's exactly what I would do. So hopefully, maybe you guys recognize we have cosine times cotangents. And if we subtract cosine on both sides. Both of the terms would have cosine in it, and then we could factor out cosine out. So let's bring everything over to the left side. Cosine cotangents. Minus cosine. Would then equal zero. And then we can factor out a cosine. You guys alright there?
Yeah.
So I factor out a cosine, I'd be left with a cotangents. And then once again, you have to have a minus one. Okay, if you don't, everything's all screwed up then. So we have this in factored form now. I can set each factor equal to zero. So like here, I'd have cosine of x equals zero. Here, I have cotangent of x minus one equals zero. I would then add one over, so then cotangent of x. Is gonna equal one.
So we're gonna have an extraneous solution?
Possibly. I'm not sure yet. We'll see what we end up with here. So cosine of x is gonna equal zero. Well, cosine is my x value. X equals zero up at the top and down at the bottom. Which would be pi over two. And three pi over two. Cotangent of x is really cosine over sine. Okay, that's gonna equal one when cosine and sine are the exact same values. Which would be our halfway points in quadrant one and quadrant three. So this would be pi over four. And five pi over four. Are you guys alright with those four so far?
Yeah.
Yeah. So before I go ahead and circle my answers, let's consider, do we have any extraneous solutions? Do I have any fractions?
No.
No. Square roots?
No.
Logarithms?
No.
Cotangent or tangent?
Yeah.
Yeah. So cotangent is really gonna be cosine over sine. Okay, we cannot divide by zero, so the sine of any of these values give me zero.
No.
No, so we do not have any extraneous solutions in this problem. So my answers are gonna be x equals. Pi over four. Pi over two. Three pi over two. And five pi over four. I didn't quite write those in order, but. Like I said, order does not matter. Just make sure you have all of your solutions there. Make sure you say radians because these are angles. And we are in radians. Questions? Nope. Alright, three more problems. And then we're done. Alright, we'll give you guys cosine squared. Of theta. Plus sine of theta. Minus two. Is gonna equal cosine of two theta. And theta will be between zero and two pi. Check in. You guys need more time, I assume? Yeah, cap.
Yeah.
What about now? You still want more time?
We good.
Good? Everyone else good? Alright, where do you wanna start then? Thoughts?
Double angle formula on the right side.
Yeah, I'd start off with the right side. So anytime we have sine of two theta or cosine of two theta. I'd get rid of that first. So remember, cosine goes cosine cosine, so this will be cosine squared. Of theta. Minus sine squared of theta. You guys alright with that? Yes, no? Yeah.
Yeah, we good.
Okay. You could get everything on one side right now. Uh, another thought would be. We have cosine squared. Sin. Cosine squared. Sin. Are we gonna want everything in terms of cosine or sine?
Sin.
We're gonna want everything in terms of sine. Uh, so maybe we see if we subtract everything, my cosine squares would cancel. And then I'll have a positive sine squared plus sine minus two. Uh, so I was thinking maybe we wanna get everything in terms of sine squared, but. This one really. Would probably make most sense if we get it on the same side first. Just because your sine or cosine squares would cancel. So if I bring everything to the left side, I'll then have sine squared of theta. Plus sine of theta minus two. Will equal zero. You guys alright with that? Yes.
Yeah, we.
You good?
Mm-hmm.
What should we do next?
Factor.
Factor. Okay, so like I said, a lot of students really struggle factoring signs and cosines. Just think of it as something squared plus something minus two. So it's kinda like x squared plus x minus two. Which were factored. X plus two, x minus one. But instead of x's, we really have sine, so sine. Of theta plus two. Sin of theta minus one. You guys alright with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so from there, I'd set each factor equal to zero, so here I have, ooh. Sin of theta equals negative. sine of theta equals negative two and sine of theta equals one. So remember, sine is really our y value on the unit circle. Is my y value ever gonna equal negative two?
No.
No? So there's really no solution from this part. Over here, I'm looking for when my y value equals one. That would be up on top, and that would be pi over two. Which while I look back to see if we have any extraneous solutions, I don't have any denominators, I don't have sine or a cotangent, I don't have tangents. Okay, so that is not extraneous. And that is my only solution here, so theta is gonna equal pi over two. Radians. Questions on that problem?
No.
Nope? Alright, two more of them. One more solving and then one of your other one.
Wait, are we gonna have that like trifecta thing?
What's up?
Are we gonna have like, like that three x, like sine of three?
No, there will no, there will not be any three x's on this test. Unless you want me to put it on it.
No, we're good.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
I can put it on there.
No, we good.
Alright. Sin of x minus sine squared of x equals three cosine squared of x. X will be between zero and two pi. Ready or want more time?
Ready?
Ready? Okay, where do you want to begin? Thoughts? Anybody?
Double angle, double angle formula on right side.
Uh, not double angle formula. This is not. Quadrant of x, right?
Yeah, no, I just meant, I meant to say Pythagorean idea.
Pythagorean idea, that is exactly where I would start. So cosine squared is really one minus sine squared. And it's three times all of this, so you need to distribute your three to both of those terms. So this would be three minus three sine squared of x. Now, if you're on the left side, you still have sine of x minus sine squared of x. Okay, the reason I would have started with that is hopefully you guys recognize we have sine, sine squared, cosine squared. We're gonna want to factor. So we either need them all in terms of sine or all in terms of cosine. You can't change sine of x. You can change sine squared in the cosine or you change cosine squared in the sine. But you can't change a regular sine of x. So once we do that, we're all in terms of sine now. Do you want to move everything over to the left side or to the right side? Anybody, talk to me? You guys all asleep?
Left side.
Left side, why do you want to change it to the left side? Any reason behind that?
Oh, uh, I don't know, it just makes the sine squared positive, and I like positive numbers.
Yeah, so you guys could get it to either side, left side or right side, just me personally, I always need to move it over to the left side. Because then I would have a positive sine squared. And to me, I really struggle to factor if I have a negative leading coefficient on there. So if I move this all to the right side, I would have three sine squared minus sine squared, which would be two sine squared. I still have sine of x. And then I move the three over to the left side, which would be minus three equals zero. Now, if you moved everything over to the right side, all of your signs would change, so this would be negative two sine squared minus sine plus three. Which is perfectly fine, but like I said, I just really struggle to factor if this first term is negative. So hopefully you guys factor it from here. Okay, the only way to multiply to get two sine squared would be two sine times a regular sine. The only way to multiply to get to negative three is one of them's gotta be positive, and one of them's gotta be negative, one of them's gonna be one, and one of them's gonna be three. Okay, so I want a positive size and a plus here and minus here. You guys alright with that factoring?
Quick question, do you have to do, um, do, do like, yeah, do, sorry, do you have to do uh two sine of x plus three? Or could you do two sine of x plus one and sine of x minus three?
So if you do two sine of x plus one.
Like, doesn't matter?
It does.
Okay.
Uh, reason being is this middle term. Okay, because if we were to multiply this out, we'd still get two sine squared. We'd still get a negative three, but our middle term would be different. Okay, here we get minus six sine squared plus sine squared, which would be negative five sine squared. Does that make sense, Dean?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, so this was a minus five, oh, it's not sine squared. It's just be minus five sine of x. So this was minus five sine of x, then you would have factored that correctly. But given what we were given, this is the only way to factor it. You could have written sine of x minus one first in two sine of x plus three seconds. Uh, but basically, this has to be the same and this has to be the same. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Alright. So from here, I can set each factor equal to zero, I get sine of x equals one. And here I'm gonna get sine of x equals negative three halves. So if I start over here, sine of x is gonna equal one when my y value is one. So I'd be up at the top, which would be pi over two. Over here, I gotta figure out when my y value is gonna be negative three halves. So understand, negative three halves is further down than negative one. So I don't know if it was our last problem or the one before that, but anytime you're less than negative one or you're more than positive one for sine or cosine, it's gonna be no solution. Only tangent and cotangent can possibly be more than one or negative one. Alright? So then I just double check for extraneous solutions. Here, everything's sine and cosine, so we're not gonna have any extraneous solutions. So my answer would be x equals pi over two. Radians. You guys alright with that? Alright, ready for your last problem then? So this one's not approved, it's not solving, you need to evaluate. So let's do sine of seventeen pi over twelve. Figure out what seven, sine of seventeen pi over twelve is gonna be.
Are we evaluating on the test tomorrow?
Yeah, uh, you'll have six problems that are proofs. You'll have four problems that are solving. And then there's gonna be one problem in radians, either sine or cosine, that you have to evaluate using some indifference formula. Okay, that'll be the last problem on your test.
Mr. Hurney, is this the problem that you said we're only gonna have one of on the test?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
There'll only be one of these, it'll be the last problem on your test. I will not give you guys tangent or cotangent though. But it would be sine or cosine. It will definitely be radians, not degrees. You guys one more time, are you ready? Good? Was that a good symbol? Yeah, okay. So we gotta use some indifference formula with sine, so the first thing I gotta do is figure out how to split up the sine into something plus something that I'm gonna be able to figure out. So I'm gonna put it over twelve. Remember, you might have to do a minus to get to what you need on your test. Uh, but here, I'm just gonna try to add two numbers together. Okay? So I have to pick numbers that are gonna reduce with twelve, but also add to seventeen. What two numbers might I pick?
Eight and nine.
Eight and nine definitely work, there might be other things that also work, which is fine, we'll get to the same answer. Okay? So if I chose eight and nine, this is really gonna be sine. Eight pi over twelve reduces to two pi over three. Nine pi over twelve reduces to three pi over four. You guys should write it like that, so I can see which ones we're using. So then I know that sine goes sine, cosine, sine, cosine. Okay, now remember here, we have to use every different variation once, nothing will ever double up. So I gotta do sine of two pi over three, cosine of three pi over four. Since I already did sine of two pi over three, I now need to do sine of three pi over four, cosine of two pi over three. The symbol that goes in between these, remember sine switched, so the symbol will stay the same. So now we just need to figure out what all of these things are, so two pi over three is gonna be that guy. Uh, three pi over four is gonna be a halfway point in quadrant two. Sine is my y value here, so I'm going up a lot. So that's gonna be the big one, squared of three over two. Cosine of three pi over four, well, we know that's gotta be squared of two over two. You guys have to pay attention to your signs. Cosine is my x value in quadrant two, my x value is in quadrant two, my x value will be negative. Plus sine of three pi over four, so that's gonna be here, it's a halfway point. My y value in quadrant two is gonna be positive. A positive squared of two over two. And then cosine of two pi over three, once again, my x value in quadrant two is gonna be negative. So this one will be negative one half. Because I'm just going over a little bit. Alright, so hopefully you guys recognize on bottom, two times two plus something over two times two is gonna be four in the denominator. Here, we're gonna get negative square root of six minus the square root of two. That does not reduce any further, and that would be our final answer. Do you guys have any questions on this problem? Or anything else for that matter? Good? Sweet, so I posted the answer key for your practice test on Google Classroom. Um, definitely look over those, make sure you guys got the right answers. Otherwise, I'll see you guys in the morning, alright?
Thank you.
Bye.
Welcome, see you guys.
Bye, Hurney.
Adios.
Thank you, bye.
I had a question, Mr. Hurney.
Yeah, what's up?
If you don't mind, I'm sorry.